Good to hear one at a time. Now it's 5:30. We call our Leesburg City Commission meeting in order. Today is Monday, February 11, 2019. Time now is 5:30. We can all stand for our pledge of allegiance and our prayer. And that by the Honorable Dan Robuck.
Lord, Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight to conduct business for the city of Leesburg, please give us the wisdom to make decisions that are in the best interest of all of our citizens. As we ask in your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Robuck. Oh, just one announcement is a clerical error with the advertisement of annexation comprehensive plan of rezoning cases. For this announcement.
Well, that was, that's a, specifically that item is just to announce we had the rezoning for the Silver Lake apartment issue off 44, north 41, and around, off of Silver Lake Drive. That was scheduled for a hearing this evening. It's rescheduled for a hearing at the next regular meeting, which will be September or February 25th.
Thank you, sir. Item four is our consent agenda. Routine items are placed on the consent agenda to expedite the meeting. It's the commission staff which discuss any item. The procedures is follows. One, pull the items from the consent agenda, vote on remaining items, one roll call vote, and discuss each pulled item and vote by roll call. Are there any items the commission would like to pull tonight?
None for me, thank you.
None for me. 4B2. None.
Intend a motion?
So moved.
The second to approve all the remaining items?
Second.
The second? Okay. Motion to approve all the remaining items, excluding the 4B2. Roll call please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Robuck?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Item 4B2 is a purchase. Resolution. Someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce that to be read by Todd Long.
Resolution of the City Commission of the city of Leesburg, Florida, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a construction services agreement with Jerome's Masonary, Inc. for repairs to the Rogers Park Pavilion restrooms and hallway for an amount not to exceed $32,000 and providing an effective date.
Go for approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Jerome's Masonory is a customer, so I need to understand.
Okay. Any other discussion from the commission? I just have one question for staff is, I know it's 32,000. And now we're gonna kind of fortify the building, but do we have any cameras? Are we looking at cameras in these buildings at this time?
We did, we did have some temporary cameras in there. We can get those back in there. And some of the films that we have, some from the vandalism. Vandalism has been turned into the police department.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? The commission? Roll call please.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
Item five is our public hearing and non-routine items. This is 5A is a resolution. Someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce and ask not to be read.
Go for approval.
You have a second?
Second.
So a 5A is also a resolution. We didn't read it, but it's actually a professional service agreement with CPH. Told them $285,300 for design of our new aquatic center. Study and design a new aquatic center for the artists who don't have a agenda. Any discussion from the public, from the commission, I'm sorry.
So my question, I guess, is that, I know we, we talked about the pool a lot. And we were gonna have a master plan on Susan Street brought back. And while I'm in favor moving forward to the pool, I kind of would like to have set in stone where it's gonna go before I agree to spend $300,000. Because if it goes somewhere I don't want it to go, maybe I might not want to spend the money.
The, the direction of the commission and how we approach this was to, that the original, or the, the location right now is the Susan Street location. Pending on this is the Susan Street master plan and some concepts of how we revitalize that area. Our concern moving forward, at least from a staff level, was to make sure that as we move forward on that, we're also keeping the pool going as well as, so we didn't want anything to slip. So our intention is to keep it at, at that location, the Susan Street location. But I also think that if the, the location changes, part of the debrief with the consultants there was to be prepared to be able to shift it if that was the political ends.
That would be additional Monday though, right?
Yes. Probably so, but I, the way I think we have it set up, I don't see, see it as a huge thing. If, if, if the commission desires to, to, this evening, say we're gonna keep it at Susan Street, then I would say move forward. If you want to discuss location, then, and you want to have a firm location before you start designing, then now would be the time to do that. And then we would, then I would recommend you not executing this contract until you figure out a location.
I have to agree with Commissioner Robuck. I, I think we need to do the master plan and look at that to make sure location before we move ahead and have it engineered.
Cause Susan Street is where I want it. But I want to see the master plan to make sure it works. I mean, it sounds like it's gonna work, but sometimes things will always come out that way. What's the timeline on the master plan?
I don't have that number yet. We've been tied up with other things. So I think we can put it all together pretty quick.
And what's the timeline on design, once we have the?
Six months, is that what we're asking for CPH from?
The discussion was be prepared to.
To shift it.
We need to, but the bid, the proposal includes the geotechnical work.
Of course.
A site.
Yeah.
And he said.
It's open.
Susan Street, it may shift before that works.
So it's on the geotech. So can we hold off on the geotech until we are secure with the location? Cause we can design a pool without going through the digging in the dirt until we make that decision. Cause I mean, for me, I'm with the master plan. I think it should have been done sooner rather than later. So I think we talked about that several months ago. So I think we should have hit the ground running on that. And I hope staff can work simultaneously on several projects. But I think for me, that's a high priority to make sure, not just for Susan Street. The teen center, will that fit with the pool? Or does the pool need to be in a different location? We're gonna be shutting down the pool. So I think the timing, everything should be in place. If that's not where it's gonna be, I think, you know, we need to make sure that we are solid on, on a total city. If it's not at Susan Street, if it's somewhere else, should be a very good reason why we're gonna move it. But I don't want to dig in the dirt and come back and say, uh, we're gonna spend $50,000 and then that becomes a, a deal breaker. So I think you put some, some gas on that, on that master plan and get it to as soon as possible.
Okay. And if that's the plan to hold off, let's, let's hold off. We'll get back with a couple, we have a couple.
So we're gonna hold off entirely?
I would, I would not, I would say, give us a, a meeting or two at the most to come back with some, with the Susan Street location and the, and the Susan Street master plan.
Okay.
I think we can have that back to you quickly.
Okay. And I knew the commission and I don't know where the commission stands on this, but Al and I've spoken, I've made it clear, I'm not a supporter of going to Susan Street. So I'll just put that out there.
Well, I can tell you this from when we've had talks. And I know Travis has received some phone calls. My representative on the recreation board has received it. I've received calls from several residents, people in the swim teams. And that is not the most favorable idea if we're gonna look at, as we do, or talk about all these, you know, getting a census of where the community wants it. I don't know that that's gonna end up being the best place. Number two, I really hate to move forward at this point until the staff has really done their due diligence with the school and the school board as far as their involvement in this thing. I, I spoke about this, I think, a couple meetings ago. But, you know, they're gonna get a, a huge chunk of change with no impact. And so this is something they've been using for 35 years. And, you know, it's time maybe to ante up. And, and the, we don't have the money from Leesburg really doesn't fly anymore, in my opinion. So, you know, they have property. I've had several people mention, over here, I mean, it's one block over from Canal. What's that street? Where the dent, where the foot doctor is?
Pine Street.
Is that Pine? Do we, is there a lot there that the city owns or the?
CDC owns.
The CDC owns, that that might could be a good location. So I, I think there's been, no, my point is, is just, I think people have a lot of ideas of where we, and I think that's something that we should vet out. Uh, maybe have some community meetings and, and really see. And like I said, if we're building, you know, a $100,000 swimming pool, well, hey, just put it wherever. But if it's gonna be a $3 million swimming pool, it's gonna be there for the next 50 years. I think it's critical to get that kind of investment. Make sure that the community is happy with it before we pick a location. So I'd like to, I'd like to hold off on this at least a few months and, and see what staff can do to address some of these issues for me.
You got anything else?
No, no, I was just gonna comment. It sounds like the same people who didn't contacted Jay that, you know, spoke with me and that was the basis of my comment.
Nobody contacted me, so. Any comments from your commission?
No, no, I, I think that we, we don't want to rush and do this ahead of time, so, yeah.
Commissioner Robuck, anything else? Any public comment? Mayor?
Yes, sir. So are we gonna table this, postpone it, vote on it, or what are you wanting to do now?
Table it.
Table it. Just table this? Okay, move the table.
You have a second?
Second.
So staff has specific instructions. Staff know what they're gonna do.
Yeah, we got specific.
You're gonna make the entire community happy on the pool issue?
And we're gonna make everybody happy, for the most part. Guy trying.
Like, that's gonna happen.
And for me, I don't, I don't, I don't get excited about, people make comments from the swim team cause they said, no one would go to Carver Heights, swim in a Carver Heights pool. There's gonna be all these problems. There have been no problems. Everybody's been happy. Been no issues. So I think sometimes we hear these comments and we get all alarmed. But if you want to swim in a, in a pool or water, it doesn't matter where you put it in the city of Leesburg. If you don't want to swim, don't, the swim team, don't swim. So I don't think, for me, that doesn't move me. I think the best location, I think that's what the study is supposed to come back and show us. Is the best location, not because somebody wants it. But if it's gonna cost me $500,000 to put it somewhere else, then for me, that's gonna be a deal breaker. Cause I think financially, we gotta make sure we're doing the best for all the citizens, no matter where we're putting that. So I think the Susan Street was kind of, I mean, Mr. Peterson wasn't here, but that was kind of discussion with the parking lot being there already existing. So that would think what staff would move in that direction. So that's.
And I'll just, I'll just add my personal comments. Or I guess I'd like to see it more in the center of town. And, and the old location was, you know, in the center of town. So I just wanted to ensure that.
Yeah, and I hadn't heard any of those thoughts that you referenced too. But like so many times when you make statements that everybody, when you have community meetings in that area, this is what they want. I don't think it's fair to say now that we're not gonna listen to what they want if this is where we deem it to be best. We gotta be consistent. So all I'm saying, if we're gonna do $3 million pool, let's look what fits best for everybody. Uh, but I have no problem. I do agree with you wholeheartedly. I mean, if, if Carver Heights or Susan Street ended up being where our pool went, I certainly don't feel like there's a safety issue. Um, but I just, I'm just saying, there's a lot of ideas kicked around. And I still, um, my biggest deal right now is I want to get the schools' involvement. They even have property. So I just, I just don't want to jump right this minute until we've had an idea to vet this around a little more depth.
I agree. And, and one thing we've, we've learned is, uh, the more we bet it, the longer it takes to do it. So I will hope that staff will get us into a, a room we can make a decision. We can move forward, so we're not talking about this next year. And hoping the master plan, the staff is also talking about a teen center. Cause I don't want to have, talk about this in 2020. So hope the staff is, is not saying we got too much to do. So I think that was a high priority for, for the commission as well. So I would love to see staff come back with a, a comprehensive plan for Susan Street, other parts of the city, a charrette if it needs to be done. Uh, my thing is to get it done. I'm not sold on where it is. I just want to see it done. And I think, even if we go to the other side of town, I think that makes our city, kind of, it's, Mike's in the middle of the city. It kind of diversifies where things are, activity. So, um, I think cost will be an issue for me. But I think if staff has a, a good enough reason to do it, I'm, you know, I'm willing to look at it. But I want us to say if we're to bid, I think the teen center should be, um, something we should be talking about, our master plan. And I hope staff brings it back real soon. Any other comments from the commission? All right. No information report, city attorney items?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Vote the table. I'm sorry, vote the table. Roll call please.
Commissioner Robuck?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Christian?
Yes.
City attorney items?
Nothing.
City manager items?
Nothing.
Oh, wow. Dan, you was right, man. Public comment. This section is reserved for members of the public to bring up matters of concern or opportunities of praise. Issues brought up will not be discussed in detail at this meeting. Issue will either be referred to appropriate staff or be scheduled for consideration at a future city commission meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes, please. Public comment? Any public comment tonight?
Everybody's happy.
Okay. Roll call.
Commissioner Hurley?
Yes. Um, one things that I wanted to talk about real quick is, uh, I've had several meetings with different community leaders and, and even spent some time with Al last week. Um, you know, we have had so many projects in the last six years that we've done. Especially the last three years, we've really hit them. And we're kind of wrapping up a lot of stuff in the next 12 months. A lot of our stuff will be done. Um, so, um, I got with Al and after talking to a lot of the community leaders, um, I, I would like to see if we could start the process right now of, uh, kind of loading the hopper for some projects that we would like to accomplish over the next five years. Mainly for me, I think that would be tackling a lot of the issues that we have going on with downtown. There's, uh, you know, a lot of growth in the city, but that growth has also turned towards downtown now, which we've been pushing for, for a long time. Uh, obviously, we've got many businesses and, and retail and restaurants and, and different, uh, businesses that have opened offices up downtown. Now there's a lot of apartments being built upstairs. And so all of those things are going to bring a host of issues, whether it's parking or 200 trashcans parked along the roads or just a host of things. So, you know, we have a little bit of money in the downtown CRA. The downtown merchants would like to, uh, have some things, you know, start happening again downtown. Um, and then, you know, you can kind of talk to just about everybody. So I'd like to have, uh, some, some things to be talked about with Al. Al can maybe elaborate a little more in detail if he wants. But maybe go ahead and, uh, there's a company that had done the basic same thing for Clermont. Came up with some really good ideas for them to give us some projections and some ideas of what we could do downtown that would help, you know, kind of take us to that next level so that we always have something in the hopper instead of just sitting back waiting for something to do. Because obviously, whatever we do takes a little bit of time. So I don't know if you guys have a problem with that or if you agree, you know, with trying to get some ideas. You know, we, we visit a lot of towns and see things that they've done to transform their downtowns. And now that we have, and I'll just give you one idea. You know, we've been talking since I started here with, um, a gateway, a connector to connect Venetian Gardens to downtown. And the truth and reality is, I think that the distance just prohibits that. It's just not gonna work. You know, you, everybody uses Taverri's and that's great. When you pull your boat up to Taverri's, Ruby Street is 60 feet off of the bank. And then another 90 feet, you're on Main Street. Well, here, you know, it's a half a mile. And that's once you get to Dixie. Then you gotta cross Dixie. So, you know, my point is, somebody's not gonna bring their boat, park it at Venetian Gardens and walk all the way down to one of the restaurants on Main Street. I don't believe. And, um, so I think that for us, uh, there've been a lot of talks, um, and, you know, with different boards and partnership even talked about it, you know, starting to maybe look at revamping Market Street or Magnolia Street, doing some things down there that, that we could. Because we are gonna have to broaden out. And so I don't think that the connector is really gonna work. Um, but I would just like to find out. I'd like to start looking at what's some of the ideas. And if we're not gonna spend, you know, a million dollars to try to connect from here to Dixie with a park, then maybe we could revamp that money to start utilizing it downtown in some other ways. That would be more beneficial. Al?
Yeah, let me, if you will, kind of, I just let me kind of expand. Cause I've, I've talked with each of you and publicly, I think this is an important concept. And, and I think it's kind of important for the commission to kind of see how I'm trying to string your collective vision here together. Over five years ago, y'all hired me. Um, three of you are still here from, from five years ago. So, but most of the time, you know, the, the vision has been pretty much the same. And back, you know, back five years ago, today, the vision was help, help, help the community out with where we're at with Smart Grid. Uh, help us out with some blight and decay issues. Help us out with recreating a location for Venetian Gardens. Um, and, and so I've, I've explained that stump speech now, I don't know how many times in the past, but it just seems like it was, it was meeting week and meeting with different groups. And so you guys asked me, asked, asked to accomplish those things. And you said, don't spend any money. Um, and we really haven't. And new money. And so through those concepts, I think we've worked extremely hard to position the electric utility to be in a competitive place, to rebound from Smart Grid. Um, in that time, we've come up with a bunch of different ways to come up with finances. Selling the fiber system to create cash. And then we delved into the master plan for Venetian Gardens and came up with a really cool concept. And when we did that in the summer of 2014, I sat there and thought, we'd never get this thing done. And here we are, year five, with the community center breaking ground, the restaurant ready to go. And really looking by this holiday season, that for the very, very most part, 99% of that plan that y'all came up with will be done and paid for. So I, I mean, that, those are huge steps. Um, but through all of that process, as we, we've continued to move forward, I think we're in a, at a precipice now where we do need to watch some of our funding. From the war chest that we put together, there's about $3 to $5 million cash left. Um, I was hoping it was gonna be a little bit more than that because of the sale of the 470 property. And I think I, I gave you shades of this when we did the budget process. About $4 million of, of those dollars, uh, really right now need to stay in the water and sewer fund to, to make those improvements until we receive the capacity payments from the growth of the villages, um, for the construction and expansion. So I think once that's done, then you will have some available cash. But right now, the, the war chest, to do pay-as-you-go type projects, is sitting around $3.5 to $5 million. I'll get a tighter number on that from Brandy. Brandy and I have been working on that the past week or so. Uh, but moving forward, with, with that number, uh, you've got, I think, three major concepts that we want to move forward with. We have the pool concept, which we have the 2.6 million allocated for. We've been talking about the teen center concept and the downtown concept. And I think those are three separate, and I'm, now I'm gonna mix them in a second. But, um, with relation to what Commissioner Hurley has spoke to is, I think, uh, through our alliances and our part, and partnerships and different feedback, at least my office has been getting tons of varying approaches of how we approach and what we do downtown. Being one of our, our major things that we need to do. And, and I want to say, for the past three years or so, I've always kind of been gearing up to start to move off into that link concept. Uh, and the feedback that I've been receiving from the business community, mainly the partnership, is that, um, the link concept maybe is not the best concept. And so, so now we're sitting with funds and we're still in a position to be able to make positive impact. But I want to make sure the community as well as the commission is on the same sheet of paper and, and putting the investments where they need to go. So I, I think everybody agrees that downtown is one of those things that we need to focus on. But downtown, I think, breaks down into six projects. We have the connector project that we've always talked about, some of the new concepts that, the one-way street concepts, the, the promenade down Market concept. We've, we've talked now about parking concepts. We still have on the back burner the east and west entryway concepts. Got a link out to the villages down the west. We got a link out to, to, to east, the east side of town in Main and Dixie with the big giant Grand Canane in the hole where we're building up Dixie. So, um, we've got some pavilion concepts, um, that have been talked about through some of the partnership visioning tours. And then on top of that, today, Santa Henderson paid myself and DC a visit. Then in the midst of all of this, she said, don't forget about the museum in downtown. And, and that's a, a, a big part of Leesburg history, as well as a big part of a component of some things that we can do downtown. And it's a building that we own that's in disarray. So, you know, I think there, there's some talk there and some thought there. We might need to look at how we can use that historical museum there on Sixth Street and, and how that's, and how we can fund all this together. So I think we've got great concepts. We still have a good bit of cash. We've got that $3 to $5 million. Um, CRA, downtown CRA is sitting on about 650 grand. Um, so, so there's stuff to do. But my concern is, we've got three big things. On this one big thing, we need to step back. I hate to say it, but we need to spend some money on planning. And that planning process needs to get all the stakeholders in the room. Needs to get the partnership in the room. It needs to get the chamber in the room. It needs to get the downtown business people in a room.
And the CDC.
And the CDC, so that we can get everybody in a room. We can beat up each other and like we did back in the summer of 14, and we can come up with concepts. Um, one of the things that DC and I have really looked at is, uh, the city of Clermont did this with their, their, uh, their lakefront concept. They used Frank Bellamo. Frank did a great job with their concepts. And my, my plan would be is, let's get everybody in there. Let's do a quick charrette. Let's, let's put this together. Let's get three to five really doable projects with some initial cost estimates. Rank them, plan them, do them. Um, to do that process, we gotta do the CCNA, uh, because it's a master plan. So we just can't go to Frank Bellamo and, and contract them. We gotta open it up and we gotta bid it out. And once we get that done, then we can move into a charrette process. I think all that takes about nine months. So I know everybody wants to go, but I really think we need to step back. We need to plan it. We need to make sure we're investing our resources right. We need to make sure we get everybody on board. And, um, and I think that plan's gonna cost around 100 grand. But I think that's money we can't avoid spending. Because if we throw darts at it, we didn't, I know there's, there's voices in the room that thinks that we threw darts at Venetian Gardens. And I don't think we threw one dart. We planned that. We didn't know, we, we put together a plan. We got community input. We came up with a big price sticker on that. We didn't know how we were gonna pay for it. And then we came up with concepts that got it done. So whether folks think we're throwing darts at the, I will argue to the end that that was planned and that was a, a collective vision that you all directed. And now we need to do the same thing. And, and the first one needs to be Main Street. To confuse matters, I even think that could, and you guys brought it up, that there even can be a pool concept in there. Where I think if we can work a partnership with CDC and create a commercial redevelopment pool concept, then perhaps maybe Pine Street is a location where it's central for the pool. But your direction going forward, which is why that was a tricky item to, to tackle on this pool concept. Because the, the flavors have changed on this from, from the inception. So my suggestion is, let's do a quick RP, do a quick master plan. We've got funds available in the CRA without going to our, our cash reserves to get a good plan put together. So my recommendation is that if the commission really wants to focus on Main Street as part one, by the, by the way, I think part two and part three is pool concept, teen center concept. And, and I can get those handed on. And then we, we have those projects here to work on. Um, so my recommendation for you this evening is to, to move forward with the recruitment process to do a, a Main Street-Leesburg charrette. And come up with, you know, some three to five projects that are doable. Plan them and then, and then get them done.
That's your roll call.
All right. So do you need a, a vote on that?
I think just consensus is good. Cause ultimately what we'll do is if the consensus of the commission is to put together a charrette for downtown, we'll go out, we'll start a procurement process. And, um, when the procured and selected consultant comes before you, you'll have a vote. And when the procured and selected consultant comes before you, you'll have a vote. So, that's, that would be the time where you thumbs up or thumb down the expenditure.
Okay. Well, then I say we go with it.
I just, I'm all for it. I would just point out that the charrette process for Venetian Gardens was like $25,000.
The charrette process for Venetian Gardens was 25 grand. The one for, and I know the one for Claremont was about 100, 150, was that the number? So-
I'm just wondering, you know, is there an option where we don't get all the, this artwork back on the stuff? Because we're then going to go spend out the same money again to actually get it designed. I, I like the idea, I thought the Venetian Gardens one worked very well in terms of, let's get the broad concepts, like we want a, we want docks, we want a splash pad, we want a thing, and then go out and hire people to do that as opposed to, so I, I don't know if that's an, an option anymore, but if it is, I'd like to see it.
I think we can, we can probably weave that into the charrette and, and the, and the, and the, and the process. So, I would say let us handle that on a staff level and as we go through the, the review process and the interview process and as we rank, we'll get, we'll get a feel of what the consultants will do.
Okay. Mr. Petersen?
Al and I have spoke about this initially. I expressed my concern over spending money on consultants. I thought maybe we could do it ourselves, but after we spoke more and more, I guess I can see that we do need some help there. And I'll qualify that comment, I'm, I'm new to city government, new to this position. Coming from the private sector, we just don't spend money on consultants like government does.
Commissioner Dennison?
I'm in favor of a five-year plan as well. I, I talked to Al about this last week or the week before and said that it's time that we sit down and actually start to look into the future on what we're going to do. Because right now, we are at the place where we're coming to the end of a lot of the projects that we had set up during that charrette with, when we had it at the community center. And the fact that we got so much input from the citizens of Leesburg and they, they were heard and we, we followed through with what they wanted, I think they have the same right to do that with Main Street and then the addition of the pool, everything else. So, if we can run it that same way and not spend a lot of money on, as you said, I thought that was a good idea. And just to start to get a, a basic feeling of what they want going on. And this way, get the partnership and everybody else involved so that we all hear about this the same time, there's not a lot of talk going around the streets, but it's in front of the commission so that we can start making the, the advances in this area.
My only comment is, I'm, I'm all in favor of doing it, but I, I'm concerned about, we just saying downtown, I think if the pool concept comes in, I think the Pine Street is going to be a, a key piece. And I think we did the first grant, Canal Street was actually connected, that's why you have the bike trail on Canal Street, you had the entryway on Canal because that was actually the connector from Venetian Gardens to all the way up to the Boulevard. So, my concern is that when you say we're going to just study downtown, I think people past Canal Street is going to say, "That's not concerning me." So, I'm just concerned about the terminology of downtown, I would like to see, see something more inclusive so that everyone who's going to be affected can actually participate in the charrettes that we're having. And because I think Pine Street probably the only big vacant piece of property we have close to downtown, if we're going to do the pool concept, a couple of my board members, I've talked to them and they wanted back then, I've talked to him about, but I think one of my dark hearts from the original 1996 lawsuit, she was excited about the joint venture, it was Ms. Coney, about the city and the CDC partnering with the vacant land and also the commercial piece that's on Pine Street and connecting that to what's happening downtown with widening the Pine Street, doing some other things for it with the block grant. So, for the CDC standpoint, I think that, that's a win-win for the CDC and the city. And I think it'll connect Pine Street with Main Street.
Let's draw that out a little bit because, Peter, I think the only way to tackle this is direct, you know, and I think there was a lot of, a lot of talk about why we jumped into the community center and didn't have a place for the pool, and I think that's evident. I think the community center in highest and best use for Venetian Gardens was Paramount. And then, we got into the pool concept and, and there has been, you know, I think the commission hesitantly said Susan Street. And, and so, in doing that, you know, I think, I see my job as a facilitator and making sure everybody's happy. And, and the Pine Street concept, I don't know how it got birthed or who gets credit for it. If everybody loves it, we'll give it to Travis. If everybody hates it, I'll, I'll take, I'll take the blame. But it, but look, I think the Pine Street is a concept that we might want to keep in mind as we move on this. At the end, and, and John and I had a, a real frank conversation about a week ago on the concept. So, now that you've talked to, to Betty and since then, I'm assuming, and got some positive comment, then that's, that's a, that's really encouraging and I-
Oh, it is.
Where I think, yeah, I mean, so when you said that and positive, that, that is. And there might be some additional costs in that concept, but I think it, it bleeds itself into improvement on Main Street and getting into recognizing other blight in downtown. So, if you come up with a pool concept that's on Pine and then you acquire through partnership with, and the, the framework of that would be the city purchases for fair market value, the Pine Street property. Recreational pool facility goes there. But across the, the south side of Pine Street is, is blight that can be purchased, torn down, and you can get some commercial development that goes along there. So, you have a commercial and a recreational facility that gets built in the center of downtown. And at the end of this, I think what the, the community's goal is, we want an asset that brings folks in, an asset that our, our folks cherish and promote and enjoy and improves Leesburg. And if the asset then can add some commercial value and, and increase tax base, then, and at the end of the day, we have one pool or one pool community that everybody enjoys so we don't have the, the maintenance considerations of taking care of all the facilities. And if Pine Street kind of weaves everybody in political harmony, then that's a track that probably I wouldn't want to stick in this charrette that, that we're talking about doing. So, that, I'm, I'm glad you brought up those comments and, and actually, believe it or not, I think I have clear direction. And I think there probably could be a couple tentacles that come off the downtown Main Street concepts that, that include pools. So, I think we could probably have a, have a pretty good tool that I can arm Mr. Maudlin with to, to keep him busy.
Well, if it comes down to the property, I would certainly hope that the CDC remembers all the property we give them.
Of course. That's why we look like fair market value because, you know, we wrote a check for that. And, and, and just, just for the record, I mean, I think Pine Street from historical standpoint, we have a lot of people in our community who view that as the former Black Commerce of Leesburg. So, the CDC looks to be the, the caretaker of making sure the historical context of African-American community is intact. So, I think when the city partners, I think that shows the community that we're in partnership with, with our city, not just we're going to sell it off to medical offices. And that's been for the last 15 years, that's been the struggle with the board, executive director, okay, let's sell it, let's, let's partner, let's lease it, but we don't want medical because that was a whole issue before. So, I think to hear my board members kind of say, "Yeah, I think that's a good idea." Of course, as Al did mention the caveat, we also want the CRA extended so that we can continue to build and strengthen our nonprofit so that 20 years from now, it still exists, it's still able to do what, what it's actually been charged to do, which is remove blight, provide affordable housing for first-time home buyers and do commercial development and provide opportunities. A lot of African-Americans in our city who can't go and just get market rate rent. So, CDC is able to subsidize some of those rents to help African-Americans start their business, be entrepreneurs. This for us is a great opportunity to bring people back to the community and show the city that, you know, we are one city, that we can all work together. And for me to say the pool's on Pine Street, I think that just makes me smile.
Six years.
Did you hear that last comment?
I said, just for here, the pool's on Pine Street would just make me smile.
Okay.
Well, there's a lot of people that need help getting homes. So, that's all.
So, so if the collective, you know, the consensus of the commission is to move forward and start a, a procurement process to start a master plan, we've got that. And I'll get with Mr. Thornton in the morning and we'll get that underway and hopefully, let's, give us about four to six weeks, hopefully we'll have a contract back to you on starting the process.
Is the pool going to be a part of that? I'm not clear on that or not. I thought I heard it both ways. And I'm, there's no right or wrong.
I would say, I would say be flexible on that for right now. In four to six weeks, as we're seeking a consultant to do the master plan, you guys put some pressure on me tonight on the Susan Street issue as well. So, you know, maybe perhaps that's something we iron out and we, we get that resolved in the next few weeks, month or so, and then maybe it does become part of that.
But I just made that comment in light of the talk on, you know, citizen input and this and that. And I think the pool, you know, is such a big purchase or a big cost, I just perked up and say, "Maybe the community should have more input on that one."
Okay. And then, other than all that great stuff, I don't forget that this week is the last week for Mardi Gras, Friday night's the ball, Saturday night's the parade, Saturday morning is the puppies and dog parade, Saturday at noon is little kids, Saturday at 2:00 is old ladies, I don't know, something, or something, or something all day long, but-
There he is politically correct again.
At least we have old ladies in our town, believe it or not.
And a lot of old men, too.
Isn't that why we're so nice? So, if you need a ticket, get one, it's going to be a lot of fun, hope you'll come out. I mean, Mardi Gras is a wonderful party on the street, I think is what they call it, but it's always, the floats and stuff are always amazing. And the reason I think I like it so much is anything that brings a community together, but it's all, it's people building the floats because they just want to have fun. It's not, like 4th of July is Independence, but it's always the parade for politicians and I hate that one. But I love Christmas and Mardi Gras because that's just about having fun. So, that's this weekend.
And get a renegus your crown.
I'm going to lose my crown. And for those of you that have been wanting me to get dehorsed, this would be a good time to come see it. So, I'll be handing my crown off on Saturday night and I'm encouraging the contestants who are fighting against it to step up to the pump because I put it out there last year. So, go boys, go. That's all for me.
Commissioner Rebit?
Nothing tonight.
Commissioner Peterson?
Nothing.
Commissioner Dennison?
Yeah, thank you. I've got a few things. First of all, here it comes, DC, it's your compliment. The flowers on Main Street, I just noticed tonight coming in, they look fantastic. I mean, it looks so much like spring when you come on Main Street. Very good. It looks excellent. Okay? I was talking to residents on a couple floors at Lakeport Square this afternoon and they have requested, because it's becoming extremely dangerous for them to get out onto Dixie, a traffic light. It, they've got a red flashing light there and whatnot, but I was pulling out to make a left-hand turn and they come up over a hill and the 45 mile an hour is usually around 60 or 70. So, if we can look into that, okay? Again, the Mardi Gras parade is at 7:00 on Saturday night. I'm one of the judges, I will be glad to throw beads at you. That's really a good parade, it's fun.
That's old beads from an old lady?
Yeah, it's old beads from an old lady. Absolutely. That still has her pitching arm. One of the requests was no more fast food restaurants, but they would like to see restaurants like sit-down restaurants and whatnot. On that being said, they would like to see a Panera Bread coming into Leesburg. And you can get that right after you get my Trader Joe's, okay? The other issue is that gas station that's down at the entrance of Leesburg, what is going on with that? We either, we either find them up the wazoo or do something, but that is, they're holding us hostage, you know? So, we got to do something about that. And the only other thing I have is Happy Valentine's Day this Thursday. Thank you.
What is a wazoo?
What is a wazoo? I'll be glad to discuss that after I'm off camera.
Oh, not politically, that's not politically correct.
Mayor Christie?
I want to remind you about today, it is February, Black History Month, and I encourage you all to go out and try to learn something new about the African-American culture. And we do have another museum in Leesburg, the African-American Museum on Mike Street. I do invite anyone to call the CDC and schedule an appointment to take a look if you're having that opportunity to view the African-American museum. Leesburg High School, we do have two state weightlifting champs, females, one state championship this weekend in Panama, so we're proud and hopefully we can get them to come before our city council and see some girl power. One of the young ladies, she does go to my church, she was, I think she was in the, not the unlimited, but the next up, so very proud of her. Also, last meeting we had, we talked about the resource center and I didn't know at the time, but they were actually having their first culinary class that night. I think the cost was $1,600, lot was paid through, by the career source. So, several people who actually started their first class in the resource center during the culinary program. So, it is working and we are having, I don't know how many people, Al, you know how many people was involved in the class?
Nine.
Nine, nine people started, how long was the class?
Till April.
April, okay. So, and I think career source paid for most of those, $1,600, right? So, so the word is out, people are getting involved, we are having some partners using that kitchen that hopefully will be able to get, put, put people in, in great jobs. One thing I did opportunity and Al sent their P and Z update and I had a chance to go visit one of our companies in Leesburg, right around from my church and house, is TNT Total Nutrition Technology. They're actually expanding the Leesburg Commerce Center, adding 260,000 square foot of industrial spec space. I did tell them to call you guys so y'all can go look at it. I was blown away by the operation. She says, "You go to big lots, we're putting stuff in big lots, Weight Watchers, it's happening right here in Leesburg." And I was literally blown away and think they purchased 19 acres in the commerce center, they got two buildings going up right now. One, I think, there's a female who owns it, owns the company, and she's putting her whole operation in one of, one of the buildings. So, if you have an opportunity to go by, just, she's more than welcome to walk you to the facility. But I was just amazed and I think a lot of people, I think 40 people, like 40 to 60,000 dollar a year jobs, most of them don't live in Leesburg. So, that we talk about diversity of housing, we need housing for families who make 50 to 60,000 dollars. So, when I vote, that's, that's, that's what I'm talking about, that we can get those kind of people, that income level in our city who can shop at Starbucks and Trader Joe's and go to Panera Bread. And that's why they're not here because we don't have that income level in our city. They live in Mount Verde in Orlando, they just drive for you and collect the check. But I would, I would encourage just to go and check it out. I was amazed, I wanted her to actually come and maybe we'll spotlight some businesses in our city that we don't know about. Maybe Mike can let us know some of the great things that happen in our city and kind of just come and let us see what they do. But I was very, very impressed with it, it's a very clean operation. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Just if you would, follow up again, Al, it's been two weeks, I still have never gotten a report.
I haven't cut it out to you, I'll get it out.
From Ken.